Good evening. The January 26, 2017 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Lonnie Murphy from East Springfield Baptist Church. Reverend Murphy is also Chair of the P&amp;Z Committee and a member of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Reverend Murphy, please stand.
Thank you Reverend Mack and council. Let us bow. Heavenly Father, we come before you today bowed heads and humble hearts, asking your guidance and your direction for leadership for our city, our state, our country, and your world. We ask you to bless us with prosperity, peace, and joy. We thank you for all you've done. We thank you for all you're doing. We thank you for all you're going to do in our lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Reverend Murphy for your prayer and pledge and thank you for your service to the city. We thank you very much for all that you do for us. Let me start out by apologizing to you all tonight. This is not my normal attire and I apologize for that, but it was either this or me not come to the meeting tonight, so I chose this. So forgive me and it's been very kind. Mr. Willard, Sean both offered to give me coats and shirts and ties and they will not fit me. That's just not part of it, but I appreciate that and I apologize to you all, but as I always say, clothes do not make the council. So, okay. Once again, sorry about that. Now, we're to employee recognition. Tonight I have two things I'm going to read, so please bear with me till I'm completed and we'll come up and share in this event. First off is for Partners in Prevention. Partners in Prevention was named Citizen of the Year by the Longview News Journal. The newest initiative of Partners in Prevention, Hope for Youth, has drawn volunteers from various sectors of Longview to address the youth gang violence through collaboration and prevention strategies. In addition, Partners in Prevention addresses the barriers of poverty through Longview Bridges Out of Poverty. Over 200 children and youth are being mentored through the Forever Friends and Co-Pilots Program. This Texas Anti-Trafficking Team raises awareness, provides education to prevent human trafficking. The Union and Diversity Committee strives to break down racial barriers and celebrate diversity. Through the Coalition of Drug-Free Youth, teens are being encouraged to live an alcohol and drug-free life. Through a drug drop box at the police department, more than 1,400 pounds of unused and unwanted medication have been disposed of for the safety and well-being of Longview residents. Partners in Prevention and Friends of Partners in Prevention host many annual events such as a Union Honors Awards Luncheon, Drive to Inspire Golf Challenge for the mentoring program, Understanding the Struggle for Poverty Workshop, Human Trafficking Awareness and Educational Events, and Hope for Youth Events, including the music showcase. Working with the Longview Police Department, Longview ranked 14th nationally for its participation in National Night Out. The programs of Partners in Prevention are supported by the 14 funding source, including federal, state, and local grants, foundations, civic organizations, fundraisers, as well as individual contributions. When 300 citizens provide approximately 12,000 voluntary hours each year to Partners in Prevention programs. That's a lot to read, but that's even more of what they really do. It's pretty impressive. And along with Partners in Prevention, we're here to also honor Ms. Kita King. Kita King is a program and community outreach coordinator for Partners in Prevention. She was recently recognized as one of the stars over at Longview. Kita is passionate about her family, her work, and the people in the community. She's also the midday on-air radio personality for Hot 107.3 FM Jams. If you've never seen that, you should because I have. It's pretty awesome. In her free time, she enjoys taking the streets of Longview with home-cooked meals and water to feed the homeless, or coordinated events to bring the community together. Kita is a graduate of 2012-2013 Longview Chamber Commerce Leadership Longview Program. She served on various boards such as Hope for Youth and Junior League of Longview Community Advisory Board, to name a couple. Thankful to call Longview Home, Kita says, "I love this place. This is my home." People in Longview, regardless of whether they're from north, south, east, or west Longview, they are Longview proud to the fullest. So Partners in Prevention, Kita King, please come forward. Okay, Kita, come over first. This is a special lady that does special things for our community and she is just a wonderful person of the year. And if you've never been around Kita, take some time to come and just visit with her and you will leave there feeling better than when you came in. And so, we appreciate you and all that you do and I love that radio station. If you ever want to know how Kita embarrassed me one day, we'll talk about it another time, but she is amazing. And all of you ladies, it is such a privilege to stand here because I know what you all do and I got to read a little bit of what you do to the citizens of Longview, but the words will never cover what all y'all really accomplish. And y'all are just, and that's why you deserve the award that you got, Citizen of the Year from Longview News Journal. It couldn't have gone to a better group, a better department in our city, and I'm proud of our city, I'm proud of our employees, and I'm proud of the fact that you all do such good things out of the goodness of your hearts for those that need it the most. So our praise, our thanks, our appreciation goes to you beyond belief. Thank you all so very much. Once again, a round of applause for this group of individuals. Those of everyone, very, very special people for our city and for our community. We just once again thank you all more than you can imagine. Something must be wrong. I'm a citizen comment and I have no cards. No cards? Would anyone care to speak? You can fill out a card later. Okay, it was too good to be true.
Gave us the floor.
Good evening, council members. I'm honored to stand here before you as one of the 2017 Leadership Longview Class, one of the truly the best class ever. I am surrounded by our, just a portion of our team. I am proud to stand here also as the Executive Director of East Texas Literacy Council, the chosen agency for the Leadership Longview Project this year. And I wanted to thank you for giving us an opportunity just to share with you kind of what we are hoping to do with our East Texas Literacy Council Learning Center renovation project. As you see, we are looking to raise $40,000. Our agency is celebrating 30 years this year. We have served thousands and thousands of individuals who have come into our services and been assisted with GAD assistance, CNA, which is Certified Nursing Assistance. We also provide reading, writing, and math skills to those who are needing to improve their skills so that they can either get a better job, a raise in pay, or just move on to further studies. So we are proud of the work that we do at East Texas Literacy Council and even more proud to be, to have been selected for this awesome opportunity. We have done like most nonprofits, which is to make the best of what we have in 30 years, but our space at the Longview News Journal Basement Building is in need of some renovation, so we are glad to stand here before you and just share with you our plan, which is to basically renovate our learning center, upgrade our IT connectivity, which is huge. You would think that we can get Wi-Fi, but that's just not something we've been able to do as far as funding and finances. So we are grateful for that. We're also looking to add new furniture, flooring, and paint, and one of the things that is near and dear to my heart is to dedicate one of our rooms to our, one of our board members and tutors who served with us for 16 years who passed last year, Elaine Rainey. So we are grateful to have the opportunity to make those improvements and we would hope that you guys would support us in any way you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. And will you please fill out a speaker card so I can make this all legal? Thank you. We're now at a presentation item. We're going to have an amphitheater update. Peggy Vaughn, Lead Co-Chairman.
Hello Mayor Mack, David, city council members. So first of all, I think it's a great day. We had an announcement yesterday of another company coming to town, Total Card. I know that was in the news today. Real excited. This is their third contact center, but they chose Longview as their first location in Texas. So I kind of felt like this is a big state, they could have gone a lot of places, and they chose Longview, so it's great from that standpoint. So that's our 4A mission, as you know, primary jobs. I'm going to talk about our 4B mission and I think certainly having a comprehensive plan as a guide and post is really helpful for the board. So the board, if you look at the, I guess, the top 15 or 20 recommendations of a comprehensive plan, one is development of unique entertainment that would cater to younger people. Then there's another item, as we know, about redevelopment of special areas and I-20 is, you know, we have the I-20 Small Area Plan that's in progress. So this idea really combines the two of those. It's a unique venue and I'll talk to you a little bit about it and where we are, and then also the plans are to look to locate it on I-20. I brought a couple of pictures here because I think some, I'm a visual person and I think when you sort of see the kind of facilities that are being built in amphitheaters, you can kind of see, get excited behind, you know, what this could do, driving down I-20, seeing something like this. And then I'll tell you some of the interaction we had with local people that have events and what they think they could use it for, just over and above the concerts that facilities like this draw. So anyway, so the idea is an amphitheater and it didn't just, you know, come overnight. Couple of us have talked about what we did on the weekend, we went down to the Woodlands or we went here or went there and people were talking about amphitheaters. And then someone was headed up to see Walmart, a customer of theirs, and said, "Boy, I just saw they just built," which is what this one is on I-30, it's three years old, I guess they're starting their third year, and said, "It looks kind of great." And so, we thought we'd find out a little bit more about them. So we assembled a team. David's been on that team and Keith and Michael and Sean and, gosh, Roland and we just had, you know, a great support from the city and started doing, and Laura, sorry Laura probably does the hard lifting here. We did some research around amphitheaters and saw that there were a lot of these structures that were not only in smaller markets like ours, but many coming up on interstates and it seems to be a way to pull in a more of a regional attendance to these facilities. One just broke ground outside of Jackson. There's one that's probably a year old in Tuscaloosa. Anyway, so, and then after, you know, someone went to see, I believe, a concert up here and came back and said, "This is great." Couple of people in town knew about it. I called up there and talked to their operations person, Wendy Riggs, and she has had many years of experience in performing arts and amphitheaters. She's probably run, I don't know how many. She, you know, helped run Tuscaloosa and got it off the ground and she's been with Disney and Live Nation and just a lot of people around this area, very knowledgeable, and she's landed back here and runs this with the entire performing arts really in Bentonville area, Rogers area. And so we talked a lot about it, understood how the operations ran, you know, what kind of the cost model was, how do you fund it? And so as we started looking at these, we said, "You know, this might be something that we ought to consider. We don't see one around here, but certainly before you jump off into something like this, you're going to want to look and do a market analysis." So we looked at many vendors and we interviewed them and we selected CSL. It's a convention, sports, and leisure. It's a consulting firm out of Plano, but it's been around for quite a while. It has a long list of evaluations that it's done and really around the whole area of performing arts centers. It is owned by what's called the Legends Company, which the Legends was put together by Jerry Jones and the Steinbrenner family when they built the Yankee Stadium and Cowboys Stadium, and they wanted to run their own concessions. And since then, it's become really one of the biggest services providers around arenas of all kinds. And certainly they have events. So I do think, you know, with this group, we've got, selected a group that has done a lot of these feasibility studies for communities, especially around amphitheaters. So just a little bit about what this feasibility study will do. They're going to do a market demand analysis, which includes looking at local market conditions, comparable venue benchmarking. They'll talk to event organizers. So one of the benefits we felt like of this vendor was they're going to talk to the people that actually book events to understand, you know, how they route those through, what the market would be for this area. They would also, their outputs there, or they actually give us what they think attendance projections would be, and that will drive us into a size of an amphitheater. Okay? The second part of theirs is a location analysis and as I said, we're looking across I-20. Not only will they help us look at locations and consider them, they'll help us with building program recommendations, which means seating capacity, how much, if you saw that one, I guess that's the same one right there, you see there's a lawn portion. I don't know Sean, if you could back up to the other slide, there's a lawn portion and then there's a fixed seat portion. You know, how do you combine those? What other facilities do you have in the area and for other services? Parking technology, as you know, is very important to performers. So they'll help us with really what do the best amphitheaters provide? The third part that they'll provide us is the financial and the operational view. So based on our size, they'll help us put together all the revenue and expense components. And the revenue has rental, parking, if you decide to charge, but you don't have to, rental, food, merchandise, naming, sponsorships, and all the expenses that go into running any facility, including contract services, because many of these specialty services you contract organizations that do that for performing venues. And then the fourth part of their study is funding options, and there's many ways you can fund these, but once we get the size and, you know, get a couple of location ideas and then we can put together, you know, how you would fund these. And there are many, many ways you can fund these. Our plans are to look for some self-funding ways so that the amphitheater is built, you know, without incurring debt. That's how that one was built. They had quite a bit of donations and then they used some TIF funding and some other ways that you can raise money to build an amphitheater. In addition to that consulting firm, that project will be seven weeks. I would say we probably kicked off week, maybe we've just finished week one. I'll tell you a little bit about what we did this week. But we have secured the services of that Vice President of Operations, Wendy Riggs. She is going to be sort of the team member that makes sure that as we put this operational plan, she lives it every day. And I think it's really important, this consulting firm is very capable, but we want that the city is very comfortable with understanding all of the dynamics of running an amphitheater. Our plan, you know, and again, Lead Co. is doing the feasibility study and will probably look at, you know, how do we help lead in the, you know, funding area and help with that campaign, but that this park would be really owned and run by the city. I would say that we love, the ones that we've looked at, the majority of them are all run by the city. This is, very few are run by private organizations. Now they may hire private organizations to do ticketing or venue, you know, planning or things like that, but they're almost always under the city government. Last Tuesday, we had, I think, a very important meeting. The consultants were down. We had the first half of the day, we looked across I-20 at property, they did site, you know, drove out and looked at the sites, the land opportunities along I-20. We were looking from the loop all the way to 31. Where could you find? We think this will probably be about 50 acres, so it's not, you know, you've got grass there and then you've got parking around it, but that's about what's used in this amphitheater. It's about 50 acres. This one, by the way, has 3,000 seats that are covered and I think 7,000, something around that, that are in the grass. So that's kind of that size, 10,000. Then we spent the afternoon, which I thought was a very, very interesting afternoon. The group here had invited people that give a big events in Longview. So I don't know all their names to tell you, but we talked about the balloon race and they talked with them about what kinds of things, you know, happen around the balloon race, you know? You'd have, you know, concert to kick it off maybe, things that the amphitheater could be used locally. So that was a great discussion. Then we talked about, let's see, oh, the biker event downtown. That's probably one of the biggest events. I do know that Wendy has mentioned to me how many people come to the biker event they have in the Fayetteville, I mean, the Bentonville area and that we talked a little bit about again, you know, how that could be done. And then there were some other interesting conversations. I mean, the symphony, which certainly has, you know, has their own areas where they perform. Quite often, you know, these consultants said that they'll have, like the symphony would, might have Symphony Under the Stars, like one event per year, where they offer it, you know, at a much lower price to a broader audience and maybe play things that are for a younger audience, you know? But, you know, this could be used to augment other programs, to get you kind of an outdoor venue. I mean, these folks, you know, have, you know, said that happens all the time in Central Park and everything where the symphony performs there. So I think there was a lot of discussion, you know, about things that could be used locally. Certainly the representative from the Beltrus Center was there and it was just a lot of really good discussion. But their focus is primarily not only that, you know, how could this be an additional support to any events that happen currently or can't happen currently to the capacity, but also how does it bring additional performances to Longview? So that's really what they're looking at. So one last thing, we are planning a road trip and I know about five or six of us are driving up to Bentonville. So we'll be visiting this, walking through this, sitting down, going through the, you know, the operating model, how she runs that, and then we'll also be meeting with the architect who planned this one, just to understand some of the steps around, you know, planning a building. So I certainly will answer any questions. I'm becoming quite a bit more knowledgeable about amphitheaters than I ever had been, but I just want to make sure you guys are brought along, you know, this journey as we explore and consider this option, so.
Council, any question for Ms. Vaughn?
A couple of statements Peggy. First off, it's exciting that we're thinking about something new for our area, cautiously optimistic, because we have to vet this out as we've discussed, and that's the job of the consulting firm to do this, because we know that we need a venue like this to be, at the minimum, revenue neutral. We cannot be revenue negative on another venue in Longview. We have, not that we don't need them, we have too many of those. So this has to be revenue neutral or revenue positive. And so those are things that this firm will tell us if they feel like we are in a market that can support this area, and so we're looking forward to that discussion as we move along. But I'm just, I'm very excited that we're at least looking outside of our normal box to see what we might bring to Longview and especially to South Longview if we can get it in the I-20 area. The potential for what it brings to Longview is, no one knows, because we don't know how many people would come and visit and participate and stay and spend money, and those are revenues that we don't have right now. We would love to have them. So besides, it puts us on the map for something that nothing else in East Texas is like this. We don't, there's no outdoor venue like this in East Texas that I'm aware of. So it gives us, it makes us another destination, which we always want to be destinations for tourists. So I appreciate the work that y'all are doing. Thank you for keeping us updated, because we do want to be updated in this, the whole process.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think it's always good to bring something along. You know, just responding to your two points there, and they didn't, you know, they're going to keep us along the way when they complete some work, go through it, so we're not just like wait seven weeks. So we'll hopefully be able to bring some things along the way here. But they gave us a little peek last Tuesday of this whole, you know, market, how they look at Longview, and it, the approach they took is they looked at a certain mileage around and then they looked at that population and they went to amphitheaters that were exactly that kind of situation. So we're not looking at LA or New York or Chicago, we're looking at things that have that kind of population. And then they compared those cities and Longview was well within the range of, you know, in the median of age, average age, compensate, you know, average salary. So it's not like we're an outlier and, you know, some element of this doesn't work, but they were showing that, you know, I think they found seven Tuscaloosa, this one, you know, are all in environments that have about, you know, the same radius that we have. So that's kind of one. Number two is, and we'll find out more in a week or so, but my understanding, this one, who's just in their third year, is already in cash positive and it funds other things. Now again, you know, we want to, you know, we want to obviously, you know, I mean, and they are in a market like ours, which has, you know, doesn't have big cities around it. So it does have, you know, Bentonville around it, but still the cities are small. So I think, you know, I think from what we can look to on amphitheaters as opposed to convention centers, which have a whole lot more structure and costs associated with them, they seem to be, to get into a cash flow positive fairly quickly, you know? But we'll find out more about that. But I think that's our mission too, is this is something that we can get, raise some money for, and it can be, you know, something that can operate here without citizens funding.
Because as we've discussed, this will not be a burden upon the taxpayers under any circumstance, or we can't do it. We just cannot afford it.
Yeah.
And also, just let us be very clear that this consulting firm doing the feasibility study, we've asked them to give us the most unbiased feasibility study they can give us. We have no one on their committee from Lead Co. We want to be unbiased, because we want to know the upfront snapshot of, will this work for Longview? And if it does, that's what we want to know. But if it doesn't, we want to know that just as well. We don't want to spend money on something we don't think will work. So we're being very cautious in the way we're approaching this and I appreciate you all and the work that y'all have put into this, because I know whatever comes back will be a unbiased report and that's what we're looking for.
Sure. Yeah. Grounded in a lot of facts. I think this is a, I know David, you've been on all these, your comfort level is pretty high with this firm, aren't you?
Yes.
And process we're taking?
Yes ma'am. And I think when we talked about that a little bit last meeting, that this firm is exactly who I think we need to do that. And they, we talked to, the committee talked with them about, we don't have any expected outcomes.
Right.
From you. We want, you know, what the market is and what the numbers are and what they show and what the possibilities are. So I think we'll get a great product out of them.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll come back and update y'all as we go along.
We appreciate you very much. And congratulations on the jobs that y'all are bringing in again from Lead Co. as well. That's always good for our community. Public Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, I have just a couple of things to update you on tonight. As a reminder, we have a free women's safety course coming up that'll run April 3rd through 8th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The topics covered will be women's safety, workplace violence, women handgun safety. Have an opportunity to utilize our firearm simulator and then spend a day at the range. Registration for deadline is March 30th for this, and if we have any ladies that are interested, they can call 903-808-3388 to get registered for. This past Monday night, we had the first session of our Teen Police Academy with about 25 youth in attendance. Had a good opportunity to open up some dialogue with the youth in the community and we look forward to the next seven weeks as we work our way through our curriculum with the youth and hopefully open up some dialogue and be able to gain some insight from the youth in our community. I'd also like to let you know that we just recently hired two new employees, two new recruits that started the East Texas Police Academy Monday. Zachary Atkins and Edward Oden started the police academy on Monday, and that's keeping our staffing levels at 172.
Thank you Chief. Any question for Chief Bishop?
No questions to comment Chief, and you don't know about the
No, no questions to comment, Chief, and you, you don't know about this, but I thought I'd just share this. Tuesday night, I was coming home rather late in the evening, and I pulled into my neighborhood, and I noticed there was a police car in the neighborhood, and you always wonder what's going on when you see a police car. And I followed the police car to a residence in my neighborhood, and the young man got out, and I'm, and I pulled up next to him, I'm sure he thought, who's this crazy guy pulling up next to me? Introduced myself, so he wasn't, hopefully, too afraid. And I asked what he was doing, and he said he was investigating a burglar alarm on a garage door or something. And I said, "Well, thank you for being here." And I said, "I'm just going to sit here till you get back, just because I want to." And he said, "Okay." And then I watched that young man walk away from my car with a flashlight, go into the pitch darkness, and he walks around this house in the pitch darkness, and he knocks on the door, and he, the lady obviously comes out, and they visit, and everything's okay, and he comes back. And I just said, "Thank you," and drove off. But what I'm, what the reason I mention this, I don't want to be that guy. I don't want to be that guy walking around somebody's house in the middle of the night with a flashlight, because I don't know what's out there. I know, I do, I do know what's out there. A lot of crazy people in this world are out there, and I don't want to be that guy. But I appreciate someone wanting to be that guy, and I appreciate him, and I appreciate all that you do, and you fire guys the same way. I don't want to be that guy that walks in that building, and I know it's already got smoke coming out of it, Chief. That's not who I want to be. So someone's doing this for us. So remember to say thank you every time you see someone in a uniform, because it's doing something that we don't want to do. And if you want to do it, contact them, they'll sign you up, because I don't. But thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things since we last met. And I want to go ahead and apologize upfront. Mine may be a little lengthy, because I was, I was, I was absent at the last council meeting, and there's some things that happened in December that I'd be remiss if I didn't go back and grab a hold of those. And we're hiring, by the way. We have, we have a job opening right now.
I'm not applying.
I'll throw that out there. Our annual toy drive, which was held back in early December. You know, Mayor, you and I have had the conversation about what a great community we live in, and how giving our citizens are, and this is another example of our community stepping forward to support a worthy cause. And because of that support, the Fire Department was able to help out with some of the other stakeholder groups that we partner with, to provide a lot of toys for a lot of kids in the, in the community that would have gone without, had it not been for their generosity. So just want to give a quick shout out to the community to thank you for supporting our toy drive, and give a quick shout out to Captain Tommy Daniels, the guy there in the middle with the sunglasses, who spearheads this for us every year. He does a fantastic job. You know, one of the, one of the things I've learned to appreciate, coming up through the ranks in the Fire Department here in the city, is our philosophy, our A-Tip philosophy, and teamwork, the T, being the T part of that. Back during the, the flood that we had early in 2015, one of the things that we had to explore was the damage that was done to the intake structure at the Lake of the Pines water intake. This is where we get a third of our water for the city. And I was up there one day with FEMA, we were doing the tour, looking at the damage, the assessment and all that. And we noticed that the buoy line that goes out in front of that intake on Lake of the Pines was half sunk. It was underwater. So I started talking to one of the public works guys, saying, "Hey, man, what's, what's up with that?" And he said, "Well, the tree had drifted on top of it and had sank half of it, and the Corps of Engineers was, was getting a little antsy of the fact that this buoy line was half missing, and that boats could get up close to the intake." And I said, "Well, we may be able to help with that. We have a water rescue team that has all the, the training, the KSA's to go up there, and it'd be a great training opportunity for them to, to help y'all out." And so, this is a, an example of our, our city employees working together, one department helping another, and I'm proud of the fact that these guys are willing to go up there. And this was just step one. They had to order some parts and pieces to be able to complete this job. It's my understanding, some of that stuff has now come in. So now they'll get to go up and do some cold water diving, which, again, we're still hiring if anybody wants to be a part of that, and go up there and get in that 40-degree water to repair this buoy line. And, and little did I know that when we agreed to do this, that Public Works would, that we were actually paying this forward, and I'll explain that when I get to another slide. You may have seen some stuff in the news here lately about, we have a couple of zip codes here in Longview that have a high, a high, or an increase in, in fire activity, structured fire activities. So I just want to throw out a blurt real quick about, this is winter time, and I know it's East Texas, and it seems like it was 70 yesterday, and tomorrow it's going to be freezing again. But we know that people are going to be doing what they have to do to heat themselves and stay warm in their houses. Those space heaters are a leading cause of some of the structured fires that we're seeing in our community, and we just want to urge our citizens to, to utilize extreme caution whenever they're taking those steps necessary to stay warm. Space heaters can be problematic if you don't treat them with due regard, so we just want to really, just, just pay attention to what you're doing and, and be cautious. Talking about teamwork, you know, it, it extends beyond the city of Longview. The Angelina College Fire Academy, this is down in the Lufkin area, reached out to us a while back, this was also a little bit before Christmas, saying that they had a problem. They had a fire academy class that needed to graduate, and part of that graduation requires that they do a certain number of skills in a live fire, a live fire setting. And the, the facilities that they typically use down in their area, there are two of them, were having some kind of maintenance issue, and they weren't able to use those. So we were the next closest one. So we were able to open up our facility and, and support this, and make sure that these firefighters are marketable now. Hopefully, some of them will be looking at us to maybe come to work one day. So it's just great to have these relationships that extend beyond our city limits. We also had the opportunity to participate in some activity at the Boys and Girls Club. We have an explorer post that I've talked about numerous times in these, in these meetings, and they got to go down and interact with a bunch of the kids at the Boys and Girls Club to introduce them to the profession, the, the opportunities that are out there in their future, should they choose to follow a public safety career. So I know, the, I know the guys had a great time. There, there's some of our actual explorers down there, talking to them, you know, I, I guess student-to-student level. Firefighter Kyle Reisinger, who serves as one of our mentors, took time out of his day to go down there and spend, to really, to pitch this opportunity and to let them know that it's available to them. So we're, we're just so grateful to have these types of outreach opportunities in our community. Update on Fire Station 5. I've, I've been keeping you updated on this one along the way. The finishing touches, it's my understanding, are being put on this week. Hopefully, it is our goal, unless we run into any major snafu, that we will be back in the fire station by the end of next week. So every, everything is progressing, and, again, this is the teamwork thing that I'm telling you about. One of the problems with Station 5 that caused the initial problem was the drainage around the building. Public Works helped us out. They, they did a fantastic job on the exterior of that building, correcting that problem that had been there since the early 80s when the fire station was built. So that whole relationship with the teamwork, of us helping them and them helping us, this, this is how we operate every day behind the scenes that a lot of people may not see. So I appreciate the work that the Public Works Department has done to help us expedite the process of getting our crews back in this fire station and getting it operational fully again. And I had the opportunity today to spend most of my day in Tyler. There was an event sponsored by the Regional Advisory Council. It was a, a recognition event, and I, and the Fire Department and the city of Longview were recognized with a Leadership and Preparedness Award, which I accepted on your behalf. We were recognized for the abilities, the, the willingness that we have to help out in our region in times of natural disasters, tornadoes, floods such. You, you guys have seen us responding to this stuff. And the fact that, that we're willing to go beyond our city limits and go anywhere into this, the region, the 14 Ettcock counties that surround us, to take our, take our knowledge, take our equipment, and go out and help when the, when the need is there. So it was a great, great event. They're going to start doing this annually, and we were certainly proud to be recognized at that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, once again, thank you for all that you do, keeping us up to date, and the way you've taken care of our city. We appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at a consent agenda. Anyone like anything pulled off for separate discussion? If not, may have a motion.
Approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now at an action item. Consider resolution authorizing directing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Longview and the Longview Arboretum Nature Center. Mr. Karen.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Willard. And tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the arboretum and look at an agreement for you guys to, to approve. As you can see from the drawing on the right, that is the master, master plan for the arboretum. The arboretum has been talked about for a long time, much before even 2010. And the, the overall master plan that's been developed and approved is actually going to be completed in two phases. Phase one will include a number of trails, a pond, informal gardens, whereas phase two would include a, an educational nature center, as well as additional trails. And so those, those are the two different areas that we're talking about. So, but tonight, we're talking about phase one a little bit, and an agreement between the arboretum board and city of Longview. And the main reason that we felt that this was important was that this is a facility that will be owned and operated and maintained by the city of Longview, and as such, we want to make sure that the specifications and the needs are being met by the community, and we can fulfill our obligations and responsibilities to be able to do those. And so, we felt it was important for us to be able to have a formal relationship between the arboretum, to, to have an understanding when going into construction, where, who has the final say in what? And that's what this agreement it, it does. With us tonight are a couple of members of the arboretum board, and so if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Any questions of Mr. Karen of the arboretum board? Then this does require a motion?
Move to approve.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Karen. Thank you, the arboretum board. And I visited with Mr. Metzler, Metzler last week, and this is another one of those things that, once again, it's great for Longview. This will bring people to Longview. This will be, bring people to our community, and it's something for our community to enjoy while we're here. Lots of things can take place. It's such a wonderful plan that they have. So we look forward to this proceeding forward, and thank you for your hard work and all the dedication you all have put towards this. Thank you very much. Now, an ordinance renewing the description of Longview Economic Development Corporation, industrial district number two. Keith Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor? I had a couple of slides here, but I can go along without them. This is two items I'll cover with one set of slides here. This is an industrial agreement called LeadCo Industrial District Number Two, which was established in 2006. The district was actually 70 acres of land on State Highway 149 south of town, which is in our ETJ. It's there for Cisco Food Services of East Texas, who at that time was required to construct a 300,000-square-foot distribution center, were required to spend at least $25 million and employ 300 employees. So, for those of you who don't know, it's on the south side of town, they're outside the city limits, represented by the yellow star. So, the next item is the industrial district agreement itself, where the city and Cisco both have requirements. The city's requirements are obviously not to annex Cisco to provide emergency services and also let them have the benefit of inside-the-city water sewer rates. Cisco's requirements would be to provide annual payments in lieu of annexation. Those payments start at $200,000 annually and increase to $218,545,40 over the next 10 years. So that's the quick part of both of those items, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any question, Mr. Bonds?
I just have a quick comment, Mayor. I, I asked Keith earlier today what the total appraised value of Cisco's fixed assets and inventory are, and, and the, the deal that the city has struck, these payment in lieu of taxes amount to about 84% to 85% of what the ad valorem tax bill would be if they were in the city, and that is fantastic. That, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Yes, we were very pleased when we, Mr. Willard, explained to me what was going on, and I, I think, I think we did a good job representing our city, but also, we, we want Cisco to be happy as well. So we want them to think, to feel that we're a good corporate partner with them, and I think we've done that. This is a good deal. You know, my dad always told me, whenever you make a deal with somebody, you should be able to take either end of it, or it's not a good deal. And I think this is a good deal for both sides, and so that's what makes this work. And I thank you all for negotiating this, and this is really good for City of Longview, because, I don't, people don't understand this, they don't have to pay this. I mean, they don't have to. They, they can negotiate us down to whatever figure they wanted to, but, because we're not going to tell them to pick up and leave, because we need them, we need the 300 jobs and all they provide for our community. So you all did a great job, and thank you to Cisco for being a great, great corporate partner for Longview.
Don't ever trade with Mr. Bonds. He's tough. He did a-
Strong poker face, right there.
And seriously, he took the lead in these negotiations for us and really did a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Bonds.
What he did.
We need a motion to, on this ordinance, please?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the next on the resolution with the agreement for industrial district between the city of Longview and Cisco Foods. You've covered that, right?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion on that as well?
Move to approve.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bonds.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're considering resolution to execute an economic development agreement between the city of Longview and Everest Rehabilitation Hospitals. Mr. Bonds?
Yes, sir. This is an artist's rendition of what Everest Rehabilitation Hospitals plans to build here in Longview. They are a new organization. They have two hospitals planned, one in Longview, one in Temple. They are an adult medical and rehabilitation care business for patients that have had orthopedic surgery, strokes, lung disease, et cetera, et cetera. Typical rehabilitation hospital that you would expect. Their planned location would be where the yellow star is. It's on the northeast loop between Tryon Road and Hollybrook Drive. This is a closer view of it. They actually are planning on to acquire six acres, outlined in red, as you'll see, just east of the Marbly Baptist Church, if you will, if you're familiar with that part of town. So you'll notice that part of their tract of land is inside the city limits, and part of it is out. So how do we, how are we able to help them out? Well, the council has previously adopted Chapter 33 of our Code of Ordinances, which is, sets up a, a program pursuant to Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, which is used to promote local economic development and to stimulate business and commercial activity. So that's, that's the technical part of how we're able to do this. And again, it's kind of like the Cisco. They have requirements, we have requirements. Their requirements are to build a 35,000-square-foot, all-inclusive, inpatient rehab facility. It'll have 36 private rooms. They'll be required to spend about $11 million in construction and provide 120 professional jobs. Our requirements will be to extend sanitary sewer, and depending on the route that we take, it's going to cost us between $325,000 and $380,000, which will also annex an additional 40 acres, and which will open up more room for future development. So this shows the entire tract of land, the parent tract of land, that we'll annex, and then where Everest will build. So with all that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Bonds? When you go back to that slide, go back just a few slides, if you will, please. Right, right there, right there. Great, 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 and great for City of Longview.
Amen.
All of those things are good for us, and we appreciate the developers involved in this. I know you all see me back there. Thank you all. This will open up land for future development. This can provide jobs, this can provide a stimulus for economic growth in that area, which we truly need. But look at the money being spent here, and that's going to be spent in Longview.
So, uh, once again, v- very good job of negotiating, Keith, and getting people to come here, and making it easy for people to come here and spend their money. That's been our goal for a year and a half, and I can see it paying off every single day we see it more and more, so thank you all very much. This does require a, a vote, is there a motion?
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, sir. We are now to items of community interest, Mr. Moore.
Uh, I would like to invite everybody to come to my town hall meeting next Monday evening at seven o'clock at the Pine Tree ISD Community Room. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, I wanna try to focus on implementing our comprehensive plan and getting input, uh, in the district on what, uh, the residents would like to see. I have invited District One's two representatives to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee to attend, so they could receive the input also, so please attend.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone, I would also like to invite you guys to my town hall meeting February second, six p.m. I will be joining and co-hosting it with, uh, Ted Beard, who is school board representative, um, six p.m. where elementary school, hope to see you guys there, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Ms. Williams?
Um, I wanna begin by thanking the chief, um, I was watching the news at night when they spoke about the two zip codes, and of course, seven-five-six-zero-two is in District Three, the other being seven-five-six-zero-four. I was very confident, because I know the level of education you guys provide in our schools, both fire and police, and, and in spite of the report, I know that we're doing all that we can. And I just wanted to say that, and it felt really good to sit on my couch, even though I was sneezing, and just know to myself that you guys are doing everything that we can, so thank you for that. Um, I think I have a couple of pictures, that is one, um, that is an organization near and dear to my heart, Top Ladies and Top Teens of America. Uh, we recently completed a sock drive, um, for the homeless here in Longview, and that's just one of many things that we do, and I just always like to showcase to kids, because we focus on community beautification, enhancing the status of women, enhancing the lives of senior citizens, and community partnerships, and the city has been a partner for many, many years, among other local organizations that continue to support us. Which brings me to my last slide. Um, our Hearts of Love, our thirty-fifth annual Hearts of Love soiree is coming up Saturday, February the eighteenth, at the Summit Club. Um, thirty-five years for an organization, a nonprofit in Longview is a very long time, and I consider it an honor to be a part. If you'd like to go, give me a call, um, it's always a very, very fun event, uh, because we like to have fun, and at the same time, we party with a purpose. So, hey, there's nothing wrong with that. I said it, Mayor, I did. That's probably why I'm sick now, but anyway, um, I digress. Please do, uh, if you'd like to support, if you're interested in securing a sponsorship, please let me know, and, and thank you, and thank you to all in the community that continue to support Longview Top Ladies of Distinction and Top Teens of America.
We're done here, this one's adjourned.
Party with purpose, got you with that one, didn't I?
Way, yeah, Mrs. Yara.
I do not have any-
We need to excuse Mr. Wright, he's, uh, celebrating his birthday while he's awake, and we have a motion to excuse him.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, thank you. Mr. Purtle?
I can't talk, I'm conscious, so I'll have any-
I'm telling you, no one can. Um, Mr. Willard?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a few things, what are we gonna do next? Uh, which one, okay, I was, here we go. The 2017 Unity Honors Luncheon is Wednesday, February twenty-second, Blenheim Thirty to One at Mont Cobb, tickets are fifteen dollars per person, you purchase from Partners in Prevention, Divine Catering, Barron's Bookstore, LST Administration Office, and the Longview Public Library. The 2017 honorees are Evloni Barrett-Bolton and Judge Bill Stout, so please make plans to attend that, uh, wonderful celebration. As a reminder, please help us recycle yard waste in Longview, place your leaves and grass clippings loose inside personal containers marked "yard waste" or in paper bags. Yard waste is recycled at our compost facility, is made available for free as mulch for residents. Please don't place yard waste in plastic bags unless it fits inside your trash cart. Plastic bags outside the container will not be collected. The Parks Recreation Department will host the Daddy Daughter Dance on Friday, February third, get your tickets now, for more information, contact nine oh three, two-three-seven, one-two-seven-zero, or visit longviewtexas.gov/parks. We have several upcoming events in the community. The annual boat and RV show will be held at Mont Cobb, January twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, that's a big thing, y'all need to go out and hang out, that's a, that's a fun thing, to see all those, it's amazing what they do with boats these days. Uh, the Freezer Fanny Bike Ride and Run will be held February the fourth, the event's a fundraiser for local Special Olympics organizations, grab your running shoes for the Kilgore to Longview eleven-mile race on February eleventh. The event starts downtown Kilgore and concludes in the Longview Rodeo Arena. Several events are coming to the Turner Belcher Center, including a concert by Lauren Daigle, if you haven't heard her, she is amazing, amazing singer, on February ninth. Also, on February eleventh, the Belcher will host Colin Mockery and Brad Sherwood of Whose Line Is Anyway for an improv comedy show, and I'm sure they're gonna be quite hysterical. For more information on any of these events, please check out the calendar at visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. Survey, this was a pretty, uh, I didn't really plan it this way, it just happened to turn out, it worked out good, the survey question kinda went with our meeting tonight. If, notice the first word is if, Longview's able to bring an amphitheater to la, to town, which of the following music artists would you be most likely excited to hear? And, and really, we put these artists on there, not just to see the artists, but to see the genres of what people really wanna listen to, and it's quite interesting. Uh, Train, twenty-eight percent, Ellie Golden, seventeen percent, Third Eye Blind, twenty-seven percent, Journey, fifty-eight percent, and Kenny Chesney, fifty-six percent. So, we have a good country audience, we have a good, uh, we have an audience all the way around, so that, to me, that's, that's interesting, um, and very encouraging that we have that many, uh, opportunities for different genres of music here, and, and if, if it does work out. So, thank you for participating in the survey, that was a great, we got so many write-in responses, it is unbelievable. Um, and I, and we read every single one of them, we do, and, and we chuckle, and, and, but some of the greatest ideas on there were, think of how many people, we have local bands that could perform, I mean, and who wouldn't open it up with someone like Neil McCoy, hello? I mean, we have so many things here, and so many opportunities that would, would benefit our community and I, and our area, so I appreciate all the, uh, all the eye-opening responses that I received, some of the, the groups I hadn't heard of since I was like eleven, um, so some of you people are really old out there. And me, too. Um, okay, here's the next one. So, who's gonna win the Super Bowl? Okay, we're gonna take a vote up here in the council real quick, Falcons, raise your hand. One, two, oh, Patriots? Okay. Okay, well, let me just tell you, this was way different than I thought it was gonna be. How about fifty-six percent Falcons, forty-four percent Patriots? It's gonna be a great game, I'm sure, but that's, uh, that's pretty interesting to me. So, once again, thanks for, the surveys, I know, these are silly questions, the other question had a lot of meaning to it, and we gained a lot of information, and I can guarantee you, we've written down every single response that you all sent in about different groups that could perform at an amphitheater, because those are the things that will make this thing work and keep this thing full, so, uh, thank you for your responses. A few other things, um, I didn't prepare, Sean, and I'm sorry, but it's time to start thinking about the scholarships, Mayor Scholarship is coming around the corner, so, we started it last year in January, we're gonna start it again this year in January. So, you high school seniors at Pine Tree, Spring Hill, Longview High School, just like last year, it's just an essay, it's a one-page essay on why you think Longview is great, or what you could do to make Longview better, or what you've done to make Longview better. And we'll award the scholarship in April, I think we did last year, was it May? Either be, either be in April or May. But we'll put something up on our website, like we did last year, so you know where to turn the scholarships in. Um, must be a senior, if you live in, if you, in the Hallsville School District, you must live inside the city limits to be eligible for the Hallsville Scholarship, so, I'm looking forward to that again, last year, it was so encouraging to read those essays, the level of, um, education was astounding to me, I, I was, I was very, very impressed with the whole thing. So, get those scholarship applications in, and we'll start, uh, going through those. The last thing I have, um, I wanna tell you all, I appreciate each one of y'all for doing your town hall meetings. You all are all very diligent about doing that every single year, and I appreciate that, because it gives the residents a chance to communicate with you on a one-on-one basis. I know it's intimidating to come here and communicate with us, because this is a big arena, and I, and I get that, and nobody really wants to be on TV, and, and, and I, I get that, too.